Calling to order, the Select Board meeting for today, September, Thursday, September, Tuesday, September 9th. Excuse me. This meeting is being broadcast by the Needham Channel, for the town's YouTube channel, the Needham Observer, the Needham Local, and via Zoom. If anyone else is recording, the time to speak up is now. Excellent. Okay, we're going to start with public comment. Debbie Bryson, if you want to come on up and have a seat, you can sit right here in front of one of the microphones. And just remind you to say your full name and your address for the record, and then you have about three minutes to speak. Okay? And just a reminder, we don't generally speak back at this kind of thing. We just want to hear from you.
Okay, so my name is Debbie Bryson. I live at 18 Hoover Road. This is my second time speaking on the redesign plan at the top of Hoover Tower and Paul Revere. I am here to request that this board respectfully deny the design in its current form because it neglects to safely provide for children, pedestrians, and traffic in the form as it is with the cones at the top of Hoover right now. The hill has never, I've been here 30 years, living at 18 Hoover. The hill has never been difficult to maneuver until now. The cones where they are right now at the top of Hoover, if you come up Hoover from the bottom on the left-hand side, there's a huge berm pushed out. I came out of my driveway and took a right to the top of Hoover. There's a stop sign there. A bus came up from Mitchell to the top. There's no stop sign at Tower. He tried to take a left. I was stopped at the stop sign. He could not pass me at all on the left. He threw his hands up in the air. I didn't know what to do. Should I back down? There was nothing I could do because of the push out of the berm. He stopped. He told me to go. He clearly had the right of way, could not pass me. He let me go. Please, I'm asking you, speak to your bus drivers. I don't know them. I don't have kids in the schools right now. Another day, there was a woman at the top at that stop sign in a landscaping truck came across. She literally backed down near my driveway to let the landscaping truck come by. That's one issue, safety concern, I have. Another issue I have is, this plan, I understand, is put into place to stop the speed across the top of the hill. As an experiment, I had a friend stand at the top of the hill. There is no stop sign across the top of the hill from Tower to Tower. I know I broke the speed limit, but I came up Tower and I hit the gas and went 40 miles an hour straight across Tower and down the other side. I did have a friend at the top to make sure there was no one there. I could have gone 50. I could have gone 60. I could have gone 70. There's nothing. There's no stop sign. There's no yield sign. There's no bump. There's no anything. There is nothing in this current form to stop the speed across the top of Tower, which is the plan all along, to do something to stop the speed across the top of Tower. Yes, the berm that pushes out from 201, Paul Revere, and the other one will slow you down going from Tower to Paul Revere. I went down to Mitchell, turned around, came back at the okay from my friend, and I hit the gas and went straight across Tower, going in the other direction at 40. There's nothing to stop the speed across the top of that hill in its current form. Another thing is, why are we putting berms over sidewalks? If we, I asked why there's only sidewalks, I'm sorry, crosswalks on one side of the street. There are kids living on the other side. They said there are no sidewalks. Why do we favor berms over sidewalks? The berm in front of 201, Paul Revere, must be 10 yards, maybe 15 yards, even more at its maximum. You mean to tell me you can't put a four-foot sidewalk, but you can put a 15-foot berm? It doesn't make sense. I'm a retired teacher, taught math for over 30 years. I respect the safety of children. Children are not safe at the top of that hill with this design. Yes, please stop the speed, but I'm telling you, this does not stop the speed. Believe me, I tried it. Go do it yourself. And also, the squeeze at the top of Hoover, park there yourself. A UPS truck, what's going to happen when the plows come? We can't pass one another at the top of that. I have a petition now I'm signing with a bunch of neighbors who would never speak here in public. They're scratching their heads. It's, I don't know how many signatures I'm going to get, but there's a lot of people against this. And I'm asking, I'm not meaning to represent them, but I'm just asking you, please, yes, stop it, but not, this is not the way to do it. It doesn't stop the speed, and it's not safe. And it's two houses from me, so I go through that intersection all the time. So, speak to your bus drivers. They'll tell you, it's a bad design. And where's the study with these, with these cones? It's terrible.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Okay, our next order of business. There's no other people in the room who want to make a public comment? And I don't think we see anyone online. So, moving along, we're going to go to our proclamation for the Hispanic Heritage Month for 2025. So I will turn it over to the vice chair.
Town of Needham, 2025 Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month, known as Mesa Erencia Hispania, which was celebrated in 1968, extends from September 15th through October 15th each year. And whereas, the month is significant as it covers the anniversaries of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Mexico, and Chile. And whereas, the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all Latin American nations span an array of many distinct cultures. And whereas, this month celebrates, honors, and pays tribute to all for their many contributions to our town and our society. Now therefore, be it resolved that September 15th through October 15th, 2025, be declared Hispanic Heritage Month in the town of Needham. And Needham Select Board encourages all residents to observe this occasion as an opportunity for education and celebration. Signed this ninth day of September, 2025.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Wonderful, thank you. Our next order of business is a public hearing. It's an EverSource grant of location for 1092 Highland Avenue. And I imagine we're joined by Joanne Calendar.
I'm sure she's getting online right now, so if you can get her just a minute.
Yeah, sure. Anybody feel like talking about the consent calendar? While we wait.
Chair, I would give the consent appointments for the last appointments.
Calendar, second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay, well, 6:05, can we come back to the grant of location and go on to our? Not really. Yeah, no sign of her still? Okay, so maybe we'll, we'll move on to our discussion of rabies vaccinations and dog licensing bylaws with our town clerk, Louise Miller. Thank you for coming.
Of course.
Great. Okay, so tell us about the changes you'd like to make.
Okay, so I have requested that at the October town meeting, we amend the dog bylaws in Needham. And there are three different articles that will need to be changed based on the proposed changes, Article 3, Article 4, Article 8. The impetus for this is Ollie's Law, which is a new law that revises kennel licensing in Massachusetts. Our existing bylaw had no language regarding kennel licensing, so all of it needs to be placed into the bylaw. While I was doing that, I thought it would be good to just go through and clean up the rest of the language that relates to dog licensing. And aside from adding the kennel licensing, I would say that the most important changes are changing the authority of the town clerk to be able to assess a late fee when a dog is not licensed on time, as opposed to right now, all we have is a fine, which is $100 for having an unlicensed dog. So it's $20 to license your dog. If you don't license the dog by the deadline, it's now $120. And it seems a little draconian for what it is. I mean, it's one thing if someone is not licensing their dog. We do have folks who don't license their dogs, in which case it's perfectly appropriate to find them. But sometimes, you know, people are away. They winter somewhere else. They come back. They forget to license their dog. Or there are other times when, you know, there are just events in your life where you've misplaced the paper. And a late fine, I think, would be more appropriate than a violation of the bylaw. With respect to kennel licensing, we had licensed, just to give you an update, private kennels in Needham. We have three private kennels. The change in Ollie's Law has resulted in us licensing two commercial kennels. And I anticipate as the year goes on and more folks become aware of Ollie's Law, we may have more commercial kennels licensed. Like, one of them was Highland Animal Hospital, who didn't, you know, they were one of the first ones to license, but they didn't consider themselves a kennel. But under the law, they're clearly a kennel. And any place that houses dogs overnight. So I do anticipate over the year that we'll get a few more kennel licenses. And then other than that, it gives, it would give the authority, in addition to the police department, to the town clerk to issue fines for violations of the licensing laws. The town clerk receives every month from any veterinarian that inoculates a dog, cat, or ferret against rabies. We receive a report monthly from all the vets. It doesn't matter where the vet is located. And we're then able to see whether or not a dog has been licensed. Right now, the process is we have to go through the police department, as opposed to us issuing the license, I'm sorry, issuing the fine. The police still issues fines for unlicensed dogs otherwise, but this is, you know, more of administrative task. And some of these dogs are not licensed for years. Kind of interesting. But, so that's basically the impetus, the summary. I'm happy to answer questions. I do owe the town manager a short summary for the warrant. We worked on the bylaw language, reviewed it with town council. I think we have that language finalized. And then it's just the summary as to why we're changing the bylaw.
I think I'm reading that this would also change the licensing period.
Oh, so the licensing period has always been January 1 to December 31. But what, in our, the way our bylaw currently reads is, the license is, I'm sorry, the license is valid January 1 to December 31, but the licensing period is January 1 to April 30. And so we have months of dogs that aren't currently licensed. You're completely correct. And so they can't stay at a kennel now if they don't have the license. So this would open the licensing period to the month before expiration of the license, so that they could be fully licensed as of January 1, rather than the licensing period starting January 1.
Okay.
I have a question about the fees. You mentioned it's currently $20?
$20 for a neutered dog, $25 for an intact dog.
And that would not be changing?
No, I've surveyed other communities. We're pretty much in the ballpark with other communities. Some are slightly less, some are slightly more. But some communities charge a late fee. And that's what I would like to do, rather than just a violation for failure to license if they're not licensed as of April 30.
And that late fee would be up to 20 or 25, whatever the original is?
Yeah.
And then failure to license would be a separate offense that could be enacted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, I mean, we have people who come in voluntarily, who have forgotten to license their dog. And then we have others who we're finding some other way, like through the rabies registration, or someone complains about a dog. And then when we go to the home, we find out that the dog is not licensed. Those would be fines. There's a little discretion in that, yeah.
Do you have trouble with the current system? Like, is it hard to?
We have to issue 400 fines. And I would say 398 of the 400 will come in and try to get the fine waived. If we don't waive the fine, the process is for them to file with the court system. And then our annual control officer has to go to court. And invariably, the courts waive the fine because it's a late fee.
So you anticipate, like, this new system, people won't?
It won't, no. I mean, so today I had someone who hadn't registered their dog in two years. And like, after speaking with that person, we explained that appropriately, they should be fined. They knew they hadn't licensed their dog. And then they came in when we, you know, we didn't even know if the dog still lived in town. But when the rabies certificate showed up, now we knew the dog still lived in town. But yeah, so I anticipate that, you know, somebody like that would still pay a fine. You know, she understood that she needed to license her dog. And there are various reasons why people don't do it. Yeah. But I do think it'll, it'll simplify those 400, 500 who are late.
They ask, the kennel licensing, does that apply to residential people who host dogs in their residences?
If the dog is unsupervised by the owner and stays in that person's home, and that person is paid for watching the dog. So if you're doing it for a neighbor as a favor, you're not getting paid. So that does not apply to you. But if you start a business in your home where you're going to board dogs where people go away for the weekend, then it would apply to you.
Mary Ann has a question.
So I was curious. I know somebody else who actually moved to a property out of town because they wanted to start a commercial kennel. And so I didn't think we permitted them in Needham. So it seems like they are permitted, but maybe the structure wasn't quite in place. Is there a use table of the zoning areas where kennels are permitted?
So I do not know. The only two that we have that are commercial are in the commercial area of town.
But it could be kind of the wild, wild west, and one could end up with a commercial kennel in a residential area?
In which case, the, I believe the building commissioner would be the person to find a violation of the zoning bylaw if they're not allowed to operate.
But you don't know whether that's, I didn't have a chance to go reading our zoning bylaw.
I do not know that. We don't, we don't look at that when we issue the licenses. We're looking at it purely from the dog licensing and kennel licensing perspective. But you're, you're completely correct.
We have a turning heap here tonight. I would be curious to know, you may not know off the tip of your tongue, what the rules are around zoning and kennels.
Hello, everyone? I couldn't tell you where commercial kennels are allowed and whether or not, off the top of my head, in the zoning bylaw. But I think what I'd say is that nothing about these zoning, these general bylaw amendments would allow a kennel where the zoning bylaw prohibits a kennel. This is, I think, intended to capture the licensing of any kennel that is otherwise allowed to exist under zoning.
I understood that. I just wondered if we'd ever considered kennels before. I think from this other resident of town, or former resident of town, that our zoning bylaw is silent on this because they presumed from the silence that it was not permitted. And therefore, it makes me wonder if we need to pay a little more attention to this particular question.
Perhaps. I think the silence would constitute a prohibition. If we don't allow, explicitly allow it, and it's not really close to another use that is allowed, it would be prohibited, I believe.
But I wouldn't be surprised if we do have some that are operating right now.
It would just be nice to have some clarity. I understand completely the bring it into alignment, and I support all of that. I just think it lets us open the door to something that may be a big unintended consequence that we haven't considered.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. Thank you for making the distinction between fines and late fees. That's appreciated. Because many of these dogs are such good dogs. So they, I appreciate the distinction. It's good.
Thank you.
I don't really have much to do with the dog. It's really the, just one of the owner.
Oh, yeah.
And we have about 3,400 dogs in Needham.
Wow.
That's a lot of dogs.
A lot of dogs, yeah.
But if you have 400 late out of 3,400, that is a very high percentage and a lot of labor to do that follow-up.
Yes, it is.
So.
And we have a couple hundred unlicensed dogs that we follow up with.
Great.
That seems very reasonable to me.
All right, super. Thanks for telling us about it.
And I hadn't thought of the zoning.
There's always something, you know?
We might license them, and then it's in violation of zoning.
Okay, so we're going to head back in our schedule to our 6 o'clock hour and bring over Joanne Calendar so we can talk about our grant of location on Highland Avenue.
Good evening. I'm going to need to be camera shy tonight, whereas unfortunately, I did not put the herring on my calendar, so I wasn't prepared to be here. And I apologize for that.
We've all been sent to Joanne.
Thank you. I do know that EverSource is seeking a grant of location to install approximately nine feet of conduit into Cary Road. And this is to provide service at a new single-family home at 1092 Highland Avenue.
Great. Our town manager, is everything in order?
It is.
I guess I just had one question on this, which was that it looks like the house is not actually, it's picking the line up from Cary, but the front door is on Highland. Is that how that's working?
That is correct.
I didn't see a path from the house to the, I'm just wondering if that maybe changed orientation at some point in the past. I suppose it doesn't matter, either way. As long as everything's in order. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience, in the room, have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Anyone online? All right, super. In that case, would somebody like to make a motion?
Chair, I move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately nine feet of conduit in Cary Road.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Excellent. Thanks, Joanne.
I need you so much. Have a great evening.
You too.
I will just flag that this is going to be an example of front-set-back house that everybody will be aware of.
Meaning it'll be close to Highland, or close to Cary?
Close to Highland, on a street where everything is very much set back, other than this house. So when people are thinking about that for a large house, this will be one of the topics that we'll be looking at.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on now to the Massachusetts Property Assess Clean Energy Program, also known as PACE. And we have with us presenters Gabby Queenen, our Sustainability Manager, Dave Davison, Deputy Town Manager, Director of Finance, and I don't know, and Chris Heap, Town Council. Celia, do you want to come up? Come on up. And Celia Sinchak, our Assistant Director of Finance. Welcome, everybody. Okay, so I assume you're going to explain this to us. This is a little complicated.
Sure, yep. I'm happy to just talk through basics of the program and then happy to get into questions. So, Properties Assess Clean Energy Massachusetts, or PACE, is a program that's run through Mass Development. And at its most basic level, the program enables commercial and industrial property owners primarily to fund energy improvements to their properties through betterment assessments that are placed on their property tax bills through the municipality. And so that's part of the reason we're discussing this right now is even though this is a state program through Mass Development, municipalities have to opt in to essentially serve as a pass-through between the property owner and Mass Development. The kinds of projects that can be funded are things like renewable energy, so solar panels, solar hot water heaters, as well as energy efficiency projects, so LED lighting, insulation, HVAC system improvement, things like that. The program has existed since 2020. But as you may have noted in the memo, there's actually only been four projects implemented to date. It's a pretty, pretty small pool. There's a number of reasons for that. Probably the most significant one is that the private capital providers who participate in the program tend to be smaller boutique lenders who have higher interest rates. And so for some property owners, they're able to get a better deal for financing somewhere else. So the projects that have been implemented so far, two have been in Boston, one in Greenfield, and one in New Bedford. In terms of benefits for Needham, this is a relatively light lift, staff time-wise, relative to the potential benefits. In Needham, about 27% of our emissions alone come from commercial buildings. So there's an advantage to being able to add another tool in our toolbox for those commercial property owners to take advantage of outside funding to support those projects. We did meet with our wonderful finance team, including our Director of Assessing, to talk about this, as well as the Board of Assessors, who asked some questions for Mass Development. And after those were answered, did not have any concerns with the program. I think that's high-level what I would call out, but happy to take questions.
Madam Chair, I had one question, which is, so my understanding, as you said, is that the town is sort of sitting in the middle of the property owner and some sort of lender, right? And the lender is giving money. And then over time, the property owner, like an installment plan, paying back, but paying back through the town. So my question is, if the property owner stops paying the betterment, for whatever reason, they go out of business, they disappear, they go to Mexico, I don't know, are we liable, we the town, liable to pay back?
The town is not liable. The lien is against the property.
Okay.
Just like a mortgage is against the property.
Okay, good. That was my only concern.
So I would assume that that means the benefit is that if the property is sold, the infrastructure and the betterment go with the building. So you could sell, you could make an improvement, and then you could sell it as a benefit.
Correct. And that, between the buyer and the seller,[1685.54]
And that between the buyer and the seller would determine whether or not the buyer would want the lien just extinguished or the buyer can assume the liability, just like with the betterment. A betterment can be paid, a buyer could require the betterment to be paid in full or that they negotiate a price and they'll pay the out-year installments.
Okay, great. I can see that. Mary Ann?
So I was gonna say, the scenario where somebody goes bankrupt was certainly the one that I was most concerned about. Bankruptcies sometimes are discharged. This doesn't get discharged, it carries forward. So the lender really isn't at risk, as I understand it. The does it, my concern would be that it results in properties that stay on the market or are abandoned for a longer period of time, depending on what the size of the lien is relative to what's going on in the market at any given moment and how all that comes together. So I guess I was just trying to think through what the risk is to us of a scenario like that occurring and creating an eyesore of abandoned property.
As I understand it, and I will say that this memo, while comprehensive, was augmented by ChatGPT from me this afternoon for this very reason. And it seemed as though one of the benefits of pushing out your payments through the betterment was to, to gain the energy savings and sort of if that offsets your betterment payment. So one could see this, I mean, you could certainly see this as a risk, but you could also see it as an investment that pays for itself, which I think makes it an attractive asset rather than an enhanced risk.
Although I think what I understood is that currently the finances are working to only make it an attractive investment in a very small number of places right now.
Correct.
Yes, it has been implemented in a very select number of projects. There are 77 municipalities that have opted into PACE and only four projects to date.
And it's been four years since it was implemented?
That's correct. The legislature has made updates to the program in 2023 and then most recently in February 2025. So I think they've recognized that there needs to be some continued improvements to the program to make it accessible to more property owners. But at this time, it is a more limited pool who's taking advantage of the program.
Do you think that that has anything to do with some of our zoning? I mean, in Needham, you know, this only became an option recently as we changed our zoning restrictions for rooftop infrastructure. I mean, could that have been part of the issue or it was really just the interest rates and the?
Well, no, because you were talking about 77 communities who previously opted in. We weren't, we're not a community with that.
Yeah, I recognize that.
I don't, I don't know that zoning has been prohibitive necessarily for folks who are interested in solar projects. I think it has been the interest rates, frankly, that are driving more folks away. I think having zoning that improves the process for adding rooftop solar is certainly a benefit for folks who want to pursue those kinds of projects under PACE, but I don't know that it's been prohibitive so far.
Dave and Cecilia, I was curious because while the burden to the community is described as light, it seems to me that there are a number of points that require intervention by us. And given the focus that we have right now on our own financial systems and the work that we need to do there, I did worry about whether we need to be implementing another new system in an area that's already under a lot of stress until we get that back, sort of, you know, all systems implemented. So as you think about what's required for the manpower to do this and to do the follow-up in the cases where something gets flagged as being, you know, somebody stopped their payments or somebody's done whatever, can you just talk about what you actually see that impact being?
I think relative to the software, it's not gonna be an issue. It's just another line that's printed, for instance, a water lien, sewer liens, betterment. We do those now and it would be in the same area of the bill. So even with the problematic software that we have that we'll be leaving, it wouldn't have been an issue because there's been no issues on the leaning aspect or adding betterments to tax bills. The, the amount of work that's required is, seems minimal. I guess one of the important things, this is an opportunity for commercials, because there's not residential, it's commercial only. And it's basically a option for businesses that may not have otherwise been able to secure the financing in order to do these sort of energy improvements. There are folks that are probably doing energy improvements and then doing it through a traditional loan or line of credit with a, with a financial institution. So that's another reason why I don't envision this to be a, overly burdens on the staff or on the town at all. And then you look at the inventory of commercial buildings in town and I don't see too many that, that I would envision would be coming for financing through this program versus rolling into a financing in terms of their major redevelopment. For example, the Muzzy site, when, when that becomes redeveloped, that's just gonna be rolled right into their financing plan. Children's Hospital is another example where it was all rolled into their plan. This is more of a, a limited borrowing, which, which a property owner is looking, is looking to make improvements and make those improvements in terms of green energy, but they couldn't secure favorable financing through the private market and should come through PACE.
My only addition to that would just be that Mass Development has a betterment assessment contractor, Municap, who's been hired to help municipalities support implementation of the program in terms of getting betterment assessments added to bills and then also to help support communication with the property owner if there was ever an instance where there was an issue with the payment.
I think any process that would take place, whether with adding the betterment or following up on non-payment, already fits pretty nicely within the systems that we have. And so it didn't seem, when I talked with both the assessing and the Treasury Collector Department, it didn't seem like they weren't concerned about the workload.
I had similar questions as Kathy and Mary Ann. Is the town the lien holder or?
The mortgage company, the lender is, we're effectively just the payment transmitting entity.
And then you mentioned that this is for businesses who might not otherwise have been able to get financing through other means. You, you also said that in this climate, the interest rates through private financing tends to be lower than through PACE. So it sounds as though the companies that qualify are the ones that may have lower credit. Is that correct?
Not necessarily lower credit, but maybe lack of credit or, or their, or the, or the type of borrowing that they're looking to do. Cap limits their ability for their line of credits for cash flow for day-to-day operations. This is specific only for those energy improvements only and not necessarily to do with their operations, as well as it's the landlord, not necessarily the business that would be seeking these improvements.
Okay, so if the business went bankrupt, we'd be collecting from the landlord, which could be one in the same, but.
The property owner could be one in the same. And again, the right of foreclosure, the town is made whole, taxes are paid, any water liens, sewer liens that maybe do betterments, all that is paid before the lender is actually. So the lender is at, is at the lowest tier in terms of repayment. But there is no financial risk for the town. The town's not putting up the funds, the town's not guaranteeing the funds, and the town's not even making any assurances about the individual borrower.
Thank you.
Mary.
So have we had any businesses in town who have asked us about access to this program?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. And the other thing, I read through the contract, but it seems to me, I just want to confirm, there is no fee for service for the service that the town provides, right?
Correct.
So we are just doing this because we would like to see more companies participate in a way that greens their footprint and reduces that carbon footprint. And so in the hopes that this might happen.
Yes.
This was part of the climate action, you know, climate action thing as a, as an extra tool. Like Gabby said, one of the steps that they thought would enable others to take advantage.
So I'm not opposed to this, but I'm going to observe that everything takes energy, right? Even if nobody uses it. And I just worry that this is wishful thinking for all the reasons that we articulated. And I would imagine that the lenders have to have a higher, higher interest rate. I mean, they are the last person to be paid if something happens. So it just strikes me that structurally, there are definitely some challenges in the way of making this a program of choice for somebody. But maybe it will work for one or two. I just don't know.
Kevin, Kathy, anything?
No, you know, I'd say it's a good program. I mean, I'm interested. I hope it works. I think it'd be a good arrow in the quiver. I think once it's instituted, I would hope the state could do something to sweeten it because you're right, how many is this really gonna yield in town? And I'd be delighted if it did, but I don't think it will. But I'd like that we're at least having the opportunity.
So there was a discussion about whether or not we would vote on this tonight. This is, it's first appearance on our agenda. We do have a motion if people feel comfortable with it. I personally would be fine to move ahead. It doesn't seem like there's too much of a downside here. But if people aren't ready to do that, we could postpone it till next week, which is sort of our normal practice. So thoughts?
I guess I would have said if they, if we actually believe it's not gonna do very much, it would be better for us to vote it tonight and not spend any more time on it. So I, in my not optimistic form on this one, but understanding the good intentions, right, sharing in the good intentions, I guess I would say if we want to vote it, we can vote it. It seems like the downs, I think I'm satisfied that the downside is low. It just feels like the upside is also not much, which is a disappointment, I think.
I'm hoping we have better tools in our quiver than this one. That's what I'm probably saying.
Amen.
All right, well, Ben.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board vote pursuant to MGL C23M to authorize the Town of Needham to participate in the Massachusetts Property Assess Clean Energy Program, PACE Massachusetts, and to approve and adopt the resolution to that effect as published in the Select Board's meeting materials.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item of business is a signed notice of traffic regulation for George Aggett Road and portions of Sutton Road. And we're joined by Karis Lustig, our Director of Public Works. Karis, there you go. All right, so I know this has been a long-running issue and we're here to take a step towards solving it tonight. So you wanna give everyone a low down?
Sure, so I'm here today to present to you a regulation, a traffic regulation change that would allow the town to put up no parking signs during specific periods of time in the neighborhood adjacent to Defazio. This was prompted by a request from the residents in this area, I guess repeated requests to have addressed some of the parking concerns that they have, particularly during high trap, high-volume events at the facility. And we've sort of gone back and forth with them on trying to do something that is both accommodating of the residents and the use that they have themselves, but also would help provide the intent, which is really to limit the narrowing of the road from having too many vehicles on it and some of the challenges that they have getting in and out of their properties. So we worked with them. This was the kind of agreed-upon solution. We've discussed with the neighborhood the locations of the signs and we're all in agreement on where they would be installed.
Great. Questions, thoughts? Kevin, I know you've been involved in this neighborhood discussion for a long time.
Yeah, where's the street? No, yeah, my question is, are the neighbors happy with the placement?
My understanding is yes. We've had some back and forth with the neighbors and they looked at our locations and we refined a couple of them and we're okay with their suggestions.
Thank you. Yeah, it's nice to have this settled. I hope it's, it should work for them. I'm very happy.
Madam Chair, I think this is good. I support it. Is there a plan or will there be signage to direct patrons of Defazio Park to other places to park?
So my understanding is that the parking recommission is pretty intensive in their communication with the user groups on putting them towards the designated parking spots at Defazio. And I haven't heard of either Defazio and the adjacent property, so the DPW and PSAB is overflow, being at capacity. I think it's more of a convenience function as opposed to necessarily an availability of parking. So again, there'll be communication that goes out to those user groups, reminding them where the appropriate parking is.
And if there is overflow is, because I didn't even know that DPW was overflow for, for Defazio. Is, is that clear, can it be clear in the communication as well?
Yeah, sure, we can communicate that as well.
Thank you.
Mary.
So I know this is a longstanding one and I recall the discussions with the community there that putting up signs that say that parking is prohibited during these hours mean that it's prohibited for everyone during these hours. I'm wondering, do we also provide like cones that they could stick on the street there? Do we, you know, is, is there some way that we could be helpful because otherwise we end up with an enforcement issue, right? Which was part of what we've been trying to avoid. So how are we thinking about that?
So sort of based on sort of anecdotal information and conversations with the neighborhood, they feel that it's the same people who are parking in that area, not new people who aren't aware of that, that neighborhood. Right now, again, it's not signed, so people can park there. There's no legal restriction. We certainly send recommendations out to user groups, but we don't have an enforcement mechanism. So having these signs there allows us to have an enforcement mechanism. We did, the police department was part of that conversation and they will do stepped-up enforcement for the first couple of weeks, because that's usually when those behavioral changes would occur. And then after that, I think they'll, you know, do it on a as-needed basis. We don't typically put out cones for things like parking, but you know, we certainly could talk to the neighborhood if they feel like it's necessary. I think what we've, kind of the feedback we've gotten, both from the people who live in that neighborhood and maybe through some of the conversations I've had with people who've parked there, is that people know that they're allowed to park there and so they choose to. And I think with the signs going up, it'll be clear that they are no longer allowed to park there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion?
No, I just want to publicly thank everyone who worked on this, the DPW Traffic Mobility, the police and the neighbors. It's a long time coming. And, and parking wreck, I forget, yes, parking wreck.
And it's not over yet. Fantastic.
Nice, right.
Do we have a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move that the Board vote to approve and sign the Notice of Traffic Regulation Permit Number P25-09-09 for George Aggett Road and a portion of Sutton Road. Parking prohibited during certain hours, both sides, Monday through Friday, 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you, Karis.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome to Miles Tucker. She's coming to talk to us about senior and veteran property tax workoff rules and procedures.
Good evening. As the chair just mentioned, I'm here to talk about property tax workoff proposed rules and procedures. If you recall, town meeting in the May 12, 2025, special town meeting authorized the senior property tax workoff program and amended the veterans' property tax workoff program to create them in a fashion that is aligned in terms of benefits and basic administration. So what Mass General Law provides for is for the Select Board to establish rules and procedures to help hone these programs as they move forward towards administration. This proposed policy would do that and I'm happy to walk through the basics of the policy before taking any questions you might have. Again, this relates to basic administration of the programs. The policy does note that program management would be under the responsibility of the town manager and in fact, this would be carried out by primarily the Health and Human Services Department, Aging Services Division and Veteran Services Division, who would solicit placement opportunities with town departments that could benefit from one of these participants. So HHS would manage the solicitation of the applicants as well, work with the department managers, find adequate placement. The program year would run from January 1st through October 31st with payments applied to a quarter for a bill. The intent is to start soliciting folks for this program this fall, starting in January 1st of '26, with eventual payments being paid out in that fourth quarter tax bill in 2027, calendar '27. It's a long way, but this makes it work with all of the tax requirements. As a reminder, these program benefits are not taxed by the state, but they're taxed federally, so they need to be applied in the same year that they're earned, hence the program year being 10 months versus 12. Placement would be on a first-come, first-served basis. It would be based on what placements are available and potentially what funds might be available. This is taken from the overlay. For context, the current senior core program had six participants. We're not anticipating We're not anticipating this being massive enrollment out the gate, but I'll get to it a little bit later. There are some precautions that are recommended within this policy relative to enrollment. If there are more folks than there are placements, a waitlist would be created, and placement would have to be aligned between the participant's ability, their desired work environment, and what is available. So the policy does note that if the participant says, actually, I don't want to do this available job, that's just fine. The next person in the waitlist would be offered that position. That person would then be placed for the next available job. We want to find a good fit. There is one note about approved representatives. Town meeting allowed this. An approved representative is someone who can do the work for the participant if they are physically unable to do so. It doesn't need to be a family member. It can be anyone. This policy makes clear that the onus on finding that approved representative is on the participant. It's not, it would not be the town's responsibility to source these approved representatives. That's on the person who'd be having their property tax worked off. There is a minimum age of 14. We understand, you know, there might be younger folks who want to help out an older relative or a neighbor, and that's fantastic. We landed on 14 as the recommended floor, because that is the age at which someone can obtain a work permit. Not required for this, since it's the approved representatives would technically be volunteers, but it's a basic age of maturity that we feel like would be capable of doing work that an FTE would not be doing because of maybe just not that much skill would be needed. But an age floor for maturity nonetheless. For residency and taxes, this would require that the, this be an owner-occupied property that folks are working off of, and that they be current on all their taxes to the town. And the last item on here, which was an item of significant discussion during the focus groups that we did last year when drafting the town meeting warrant article, was an income cap. I know this has been discussed, but the general thought is that their current senior corps program has a relatively low income cap. This would increase it to the area median income for the household size, and this would make sure that those most at need would be prioritized for this program. Concerns were brought up that it might prevent some interested folks from applying. The idea here is that in year one, we can take note of folks who either applied and were turned away because of the income, or just said, hey, I would have applied, but the income cap is preventing me. And if program enrollment is low, this is something the select board could look at at a later date, amend the policy, remove the income cap. That would be at this board's discretion, and it's put in there for that reason. But again, it was a topic of significant discussion that I know has been communicated to you all as well. So this is the draft, and this would intend to be here for discussion tonight and a recommended vote at the next meeting. With that, I'll take any questions.
Could you describe, I mean, there's a senior corps and the veterans. But eligibility is for veterans of what year, what age?
It'd be any qualifying veteran. Mass General Law defines what that is broadly. A veteran with honorable discharge could be someone as young as 21.
Okay. All right. And then on the waitlist, is there, if there were a waitlist, suppose, would a veteran get a preference on the waitlist?
There would be no preference. The programs would be administered concurrently.
Okay.
It would be a who signed up for the administer-together program first.
Okay. And it sounds thing in my ears strangely, but the approved representative, that sounds weird. I mean, is someone really being subcontracted out to do someone's work, to get a discount, but to pay off a tax bill? It, something seems very wrong with that. And I don't know, it just seems very strange that you would.
This would be for someone who is physically unable to do the assigned work, regardless whether, yeah, regardless of the why, if someone's physically unable to participate in this program but otherwise would have been able to do so.
Okay.
In many cases, in talking to other communities, it's a family member.
Okay. All right. And then the income gap. It's, I think it's something of a scarlet letter. I mean, it basically is to say, I'm in this program, so everyone knows I have an income cap. And I think that's a little humiliating for people. I prefer to see it without an income cap. I appreciate that there's a need to control it, and, but, you know, maybe that's what the waitlist is for. But an income cap, I think, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that.
Is there some way that people would know that, I mean, this entire government is run by volunteers? I'm not sure what the distinction would be, someone working in the building necessarily to say that they were in some sort of program.
Well, you would know. The staff would know. Their coworkers would know. Everyone would know. And it's sort of like, oh, you're here, and we got it, you're an income cap. There's an income cap here. And it's sort of like, you know, I don't know, I think it just seems a little bit, in medicine, there's HIPAA. I don't know what there is in economics. But so like, I think that's between them and them.
Madam Chair. I guess I would just say, though, that if we had more people wanting to do it than spots, I would rather prioritize those with most need.
Right. I mean, I get that logic, but I get it. But it's also, I think it's sort of a, and now jump through this other hoop for us, please.
I remember a town meeting, the income cap was the big discussion point, and we committed to reviewing it at least within a year of then. I'm torn, because I see both of your points. On, something else you said, Miles, I just wanted to clarify. So you said work that an FTE would not be doing, but this is, this wouldn't be for a staff member to just like put up their feet, like they'd be doing work as well.
As required by this program, by state law governing it, the work being done by program participants cannot be work that an FTE does.
Okay. Thank you.
The income cap, I think, can continue to be a subject of discussion. I do think that town meeting both wanted it and both wanted it reviewed. So it seems to me that this is in keeping with that spirit, and it's also consistent with our other programs. So I understand the concern. The piece that actually concerns me the most, I think, is the 14-year-old. You know, I think about children in language where English is not a primary language, where the children literally take on the burden of the work for the family in doing all the translating. I worry about setting some kid up for that sort of situation, and it just makes me uncomfortable, frankly. I guess I would rather see that the authorized designee be an adult would make me more comfortable. Someone who clearly has their own agency and control over their own arrangements versus possibly being told by the family that this is something that they're going to do. It just makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a good point.
I'd maybe say that's, we could split the difference. I mean, I recall when my kids were old enough to get that work permit, and they really wanted a job, and actually, no one would hire them because they were too young. I don't have a parent for whom this, who would apply for this program, but if I did, I mean, this would be a really, I don't know, it seems like a really, it could turn out the way you're talking about, or it could be something that a child could do to really help a family. So, I mean, maybe, maybe 14's a little young anyway to be in sort of a officey environment, but maybe 16 would be appropriate? I don't know.
I think I agree with Mary Ann, because the child, if it's a child, is not being paid. This isn't a job.
Right.
Right.
But it is work experience, when they can't often get it anywhere else, particularly in an economy like we have now. But that's fine.
Yeah, I guess I think the issue of coercion, I mean, we don't like to think of that happening, but I would not want this to be a vehicle for that. You know, if we found there were all sorts of young kids, you know, like, could I help? You know? But I guess I'm probably hearing that. I hadn't thought of it, but I think that's significant. In general, I think this is great. I mean, you know, it's good for us to continue to try to find ways to help people in this situation. You know, you can get to the point where your, your income is low, but you still, you know, you have a very valuable property, you know, and the taxes are high, and you want to stay, and this is a real need. So I think this is great.
Thank you for the comments. I will come back with that edited version to have Section 3.3 reference 18, and at the next left for me.
Thanks, Miles.
Thank you, Miles.
So we're on to the town manager and further along agenda.
Yes. And I'll take a point of privilege to say that I was looking at your select board goals, and with your previous vote on the PACE program, you went from 34 goals to 33. So you pressed one off your list. But my, that was not my agenda item. So first is an update and a request on appointment of a deputy town manager. So I think you all are aware, and I've shared with the public that we had an excellent candidate pool for this position. We had ultimately three rounds of interviews, kind of in various forms and fashions, and I am very happy to recommend for my appointment, subject to your approval, Liz LaRosi to deputy town manager. To share a little bit about Liz, she's the current director of Library, Recreation, and Community Programs in the town of Randolph. She's been there for a little over a decade, had increasing responsibility over the years, started as the library, actually, a young adult librarian, but up through the library system. She also serves for Randolph as their communications director. She co-led their COVID-19 response and emergency management, and has experience with HR budgets, negotiations. So we always talk about this position as kind of somebody who has a great variety of skill set, and that came through a lot clearly for Liz. And I would say, kind of less of the kind of hard skill experience, but just throughout the interview, from my perspective, I felt like Liz was a very good communicator, which is a big requirement for this job, talking with anyone and everyone all the time, in formal sightings, informal, but relationship building, and I think a very good mix of day-to-day tactical skills with kind of the ability to zoom out and think kind of big picture. So we ask a lot of the position, and I'm thrilled to have an excellent candidate. I think she would be a huge asset to Needham, and a great opportunity for her as well professionally to kind of advance into the next opportunity. So if approved, we are looking at a September 22nd start date.
Okay. Discussion? Mary Ann?
I think, you know, Liz will bring a lot to the town, and she had, as Katie said, really a breadth of experiences that she was able to draw on in describing when we talked about certain situations and what could happen and what she might bring to the table. And including thinking about some things relating to individuals in town who might have less opportunities, fewer opportunities than others, some new ways of reaching people, and thinking about what some of those needs were, that I thought I really appreciated her sensitivity to those issues was clearly something that was front and center in the experience that she'd had in the prior community she was working in. So I think she will be an asset, and look forward to her coming.
I was very impressed with Liz when I met her.
Great. Kathy?
Yeah, I thought, I thought her experience, especially being thrown into the COVID thing, I mean, you know, just like that, I was impressed by that, and just the increasing responsibilities over a short period of time. Like, it seems like you can throw something at her, and she'll handle it. You know? So that's good.
Yes. Same theme. I think she has a talent for stepping up and jumping into what appeared to be everything in that town. We welcome her.
Great. We're looking forward to having her. And we're looking forward to you having a hand.
Thanks.
All right. So we can put that extra goal back on, right?
Many waiting in the wings.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the select board vote to approve the town manager's appointment of Elizabeth LaRosi as deputy town manager in accordance with Section 20C of the town charter.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The motion passes. Great. Congratulations.
Up next, Madam Chair, if you're okay with it, I can talk about the two MOAs kind of together. We are bringing before you memorandum of agreement for fiscal year 2026, agreements with our Needham Police Superior Officers Association and the Needham Police Union, the two unions that represent the Needham Police Department employees. Both of these contracts expired June 30th, 2025. We had not been able to reach an agreement leading into the May annual town meeting, so we continued the conversations with both, and happy to come to you with an agreement now in advance of the October special town meeting. The contents is the same in both MOA. The first is a 3% increase in base wages for fiscal year '26, so it would be, that increase would be retro to July 1 of 2025 through June 30 of '26, and then an increase in the private detail rate. It's currently $60, and it would rise to $68 when these contracts are executed. So have any answer questions? Otherwise, need a vote on those.
Could I just ask, for a verms, when you say 60 to 68, it seems like a large increase. Most of that's not paid by the town. That's paid by private, you know, ever-source or private developers who are using it.
Yes. The private detail rate, the $60 is all privately paid, and in the contract, the town paid rate is always $7 less than what the private detail rate is, and so we pay that lower amount.
And that's comparable to other communities, right?
It is. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. Any other questions? Thoughts?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Needham Police Superior Officers Association for fiscal year 2026.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And do we?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move that the board approve and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Needham Police Union for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Great.
For closing out the October special town meeting warrant, I am going to ask if our deputy town manager, Dave Davison, could join us for this. I'll talk through kind of what's changed since your last meeting, what's been added, what's been subtracted. But as we go along, I'd like to ask, Dave, we can, I think, just substantively go through a number of the articles that you don't need formal presentations on, and just see if there's any questions. Now, at your next meeting, we'll start taking positions on articles. So let me, I guess, start with what you saw on August 12th that you won't see in this one. So we removed articles related to matching funds for the state's revolving funds, Drainage GIS updates. We are moving forward with that project, but we have identified available funds that we can use towards that match, so we don't need to seek an additional appropriation for that. That's why it's come off. And zoning on accessory dwelling units, the planning board is going to be advancing that to the annual town meeting in May. So walking through the warrant articles, one and two, are the collective bargaining MOAs that you just approved for the two police unions. Let me just pause and make sure there's no questions on those. Great. Dave, I wonder if I could ask you to cover? Dave, I wonder if I could ask you to cover 3 and 4?
Certainly. The Article 3 and Article 4 are appropriations that we're seeking that are specific sums of monies that we collected from third parties in order to ensure that the money is going to be used for the intended purpose that the monies were paid over. And these payments came as a result of permitting that the entities received for their projects that we need to do an appropriation. So in the case of Article 3, $132,000 is for INI improvements. The $132,000 has been received by the town. It is credited to the sewer enterprise fund. That's why you see the funding source as sewer enterprise fund receipts. In the case of Article 4, same thing. It's monies that have been received by the town in order to do a safety audit. And that is considered generally, when monies are appropriated, they come from effectively one of four sources. They come from tax levy, the sewer enterprise fund, water enterprise fund, or other available funds. In the case of this, this is considered a tax levy receipt, or also known as a general fund receipt.
Just on 4, originally, this was meant for that intersection that the state controls by the highway, right?
That's, yeah. It's different. This is, but of a similar nature. The state did do the bridge, and those monies weren't appropriated. This is an additional $25,000 that the town has received just about three weeks ago, I believe. As the planning office actually turned the money over back at the end of August. And it's for the safety audit. The safety audit that was requested by the planning board and to which the DPW will be able to use funds.
Was, so I guess on this intersection, was that in the capital plan to look at this intersection?
Not specifically called hope, but it's certainly been a point of concern by planning, community development, as well as public works.
Yeah, I guess I was under the impression that there were funds already allocated from Children's Hospital for this intersection. So is this additional?
We went back to the annual town meeting last May to resolve the, kerfuffle is the only word that I can come up with, with the original funding source that we came. That was for Kendrick at Third and the restriping. We had to go back to town meeting a second time to kind of reappropriate that. But that happened and has been resolved. And this is separate and a different condition in the special permit that was always intended for Kendrick at Fourth. And it's to do the analysis to see if it warrants a traffic signal. So it's more of a study.
I think it does.
We have to bear it out.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Yep.
You guys anything? Any other questions?
Okay, Article 5 is regarding Stephen Palmer. We continue our planning efforts for the expiration of that lease. So more to come at a future meeting about that. But we anticipate an appropriation request related to that planning work.
The language of this article seems very broad. Is there a way for it to be more specific?
We could have you adjust it. Your next meeting is still prior to print. So I can talk with town council about what changes we might want to make. There'd also be article information that would provide, obviously, a lot more detail to the town meeting members.
Dave, Articles 6, 7, 8, 9?
Sure. Articles 6, 7, and 8 are the operating budgets. The first article is to seek to amend by increasing the appropriation to town clerk expenses. This is in order for the town to purchase a mail opening in dating machine. This has come about, we have older equipment that can't work with all the increased volume, particularly when it comes to ballots. There's been an increase in the number of mail-in ballots, and that's not expected to abate. Secondly, it would be an item that can be used by all departments in terms that have large quantity of mail to open and need to date stamp. The reason that we're seeking to get the funding now rather than waiting until the annual town meeting is because we have a town election coming up in April. So, and it takes some time to procure the equipment. So we're seeking the funds now, so it'll all be in place in time for the April election. Article 7 is amendment, also an increase. It's the MWRA assessment. The appropriation by town meeting was a level dollar because we did not have the final assessment from the MWRA for fiscal '26. That's not uncommon. And this is to true-up the amount that is necessary. The increase in the sewer is effectively is a 4.3% increase in the assessment over the current, over the prior fiscal year. The same is true with the water enterprise fund budget. We did not have the assessment at the time that the budget was voted upon back at the annual town meeting. This is an increase, it's 46.4%. The primary driver to this is the town's use of MWRA water during, during calendar year '24 was much higher than it was in calendar year '23, and hence the increase. The Article 9, this is the now becoming a routine article in every single special town meeting because of the change in law a few years ago, that monies that are collected by the cable providers for the purpose of providing funding for local cable television. Those monies used to be paid directly to the cable provider, but now they have to be paid over to the town, reserved, so it can be appropriated by the town to the cable TV. A lot of, this is the ultimate of bureaucracy. But it is something that we have to do, and this is the amount that we've collected since the last time we made an appropriation to the cable TV provider.
Dave, can I go back to water just for a second?
Sure.
I'm thinking about how these assessments are sort of retrospective, which makes me think about this year. Do we have any sense of how our water usage is going this year? And how much MWRA water we're using? We had a drought, but we've also had some period where we weren't, where we were asking people not to water. I mean, so it's been a mixed bag this summer, but.
The last MWRA report I call seeing was through June, and our water usage in comparison to June prior, which would be June '24, was running higher. So we'll have a better sense probably in a couple more weeks when we all get.
We'll have another one.
Another report to see how, how much water we use during the summer months.
But if that continues to be the case, then we would expect another increase.
We would anticipate, yes. There are several factors that influence, obviously, the amount of water the town uses. But the amount of water the town uses in comparison of the total water that the MWRA's hold. And then, of course, the increase in the MWRA's own operational costs. So there are three factors that come into play.
Thank you.
So when MWRA bonds monies, like for the, you know, the town redundancy, that gets spread out to all of the member communities, right?
Correct. Whatever, they have an annual operating budget, an annual operating capital budget. And once that is approved, and that's usually late May, early June that it's finally approved, then that's apportioned by the number of gallons of water that were sold to all the different communities.
That seems a little odd. Like, why should the debt be apportioned based upon the water usage if the pipes are serving the communities anyway? I mean, I don't know, it's a bigger question, but.
It's, methodology was approved when the MWRA was appropriated for that. Sewer is a little different. The sewer aspect is the formula is based upon your sewer flow, your total population, and your sewer population. So it's a different mix than the water. But it's, effectively, it's the same thing as what the town does, is our annual debt service budget is appropriated by town meeting, and it's spread across the tax rate.
On page 5 of the warrant, Articles 10 and 11 are both related to the quiet zone. Article 10, under the federal laws, a quiet zone can't start or stop at a private crossing. And so this is a standalone, separate from 11, to request funding for feasibility, to feasibility of a culvert at the crossing at the golf course. And right now, people and equipment pass upgrade at the crossing. And Article 11 is appropriation for quiet zone construction. We have been working on designs with our consultants. We've continued conversations with the T. We have a working group meeting scheduled for September 18. And at that meeting, we'll kind of circle the wagons on where we are. And from that conversation, then make a recommendation to you all on the 24th about both of these articles. Anything you would want to add to that?
I think that sounds right. We'll see what we can learn between now and then.
Go back to estimate costs on the 24?
If he's going forward, we will, yeah. So we're going to have to learn exactly what we have available to us.
Yeah, but we're planning to bring cost estimates to the working group on the 18th. It's just how far into the design are we able to do? And that gives a sense of, you know, cost estimate. It's at 10% versus 100% design vary, so. Article 12, we just heard from the town clerk about Article 13.
So just on Article 12? I think at the end inserted by, we wanted to read the town clerk, right?
I believe that that has to be you that puts it on the warrant.
Town clerk, I remember the town clerk one year inserted an article to change the moderator's term. On this issue, I guess, it seems to make sense to have the town clerk inserted so that the town clerk can speak to it.
We can talk with town council more about it. The town clerk did not request that she be the proponent, but we can look into it, yeah. Article 13 is updates to our stormwater bylaw. So we have the public hearing scheduled for you all during your September 24 meeting. And I know the working group's working hard on finalizing the regulations in advance of that. Many pages, so jumping to page 22 of the warrant, Dave.
This is an update to the town manager, as well as yourself. We know that free cash won't be available in time for this town meeting. And the funding source would have been for both of these free cash. So we would be requesting them to be removed from the warrant.
Very optimistic.
And just so I understand, free cash is not available because the state has not certified it?
We haven't submitted the required documentation for the state to begin its process.
Then with that, I guess I would make a suggestion that in your motion to close the warrant, we can, if you just agree with the removal of 14 and 15, Dave, you're recommending that now?
Yes, I am, thank you.
So you can close the warrant, but remove them all in one. It just won't carry forward.
Gotcha.
If you're agreeable.
Madam Chair, I move to close the warrant, subject to minor technical corrections by bond counsel, town counsel, and the town manager, and remove Articles 14 and 15 from the warrant.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
For Town Manager's report, I just wanted to provide an update on the Pollard School Construction Project. I continue to get a number of questions. It's, there's a lot going on. So a few highlights that I think are important to the board, important to the community. So we, as the town, the school district, submitted the first half of the feasibility process under the MSBA partnership that we're in. So the preliminary design plan was submitted to the MSBA on September 3 that really outlines the school district's educational plan and goals, and articulates seven options for building projects. So I'd say that submission articulates the most expansive list of projects that the town is considering, and that the MSBA has agreed to consider with us. And so now we're moving into the second half of the feasibility process, which is preferred schematic report. And just to say that the superintendent and I are meeting with chairs of, there's a number of boards that have votes in this process, that have roles in this process in terms of key stakeholders. So we're meeting with the chairs tomorrow to kind of map out this next phase, the PSR phase. And really, what I think is most important is, in this phase, is when we, as a town and all of the boards, will narrow from seven to one preferred option. And when we submit at the end of this phase, we would be submitting to the MSBA the one preferred project that we would like them to consider partnering with us on and advancing to their next phase. So that's kind of an update on the process. And coming out of that chairs meeting, we'll share back with all of the full boards kind of what the next steps, kind of the outline of the process for that will be. Two items of note, there were questions that had come up about the defazio site and the potential impacts on DPW operations. And so I, just to say, I met with the DPW team. We mapped out kind of what we thought the impacts would be. And there is a formal memo, if anyone is interested in reading the full text, that went to the Permanent Public Building Committee. But the high points are, you know, the, on the site, the boundaries of where the proposed options would be don't impact the laydown area, the fuel station, or the existing DPW buildings. So from a very core, like, basic operational perspective, we could continue operations under those current proposals. Things that we would really have to think about is, we use for DPW operations, the defazio parking lot for a lot of overflow uses, so staging areas for contractors, a snow farm during our 2015 winter season, and general entry and exit out of particularly busy site, 470 and 500 Dedham Avenue, just has a lot happening. So we would have to rethink some of those things if the Pollard option on defazio moved forward. And in terms of long-term planning for DPW, I think it's hard to say what, how a school at defazio might impact the master plan. But just to say that we would have to take another look at the DPW master plan to see if the current recommended phasing, which is to redo everything onsite at 470, other than the expansion of the Jack Cogswell Building, if that's the direction we would still want to go. So let me pause there and see any questions on that piece? No. Recently, there was also a lot of coverage in the news about a potential development in Dedham, right over the Needham line. So if you're coming from Dedham on West Street, before it turns into Dedham Ave at the River, there's St. John's Orthodox Church. The proposal would be for that parcel and a lot of land kind of behind it that runs parallel to the highway. And I think the only thing I would want to say about that at this point is that it's solidly on our radar. We'll be thinking about that. We obviously wouldn't have a formal role in the permitting of that. It is not within town boundaries. But we have great open lines of communication with. But we have great open lines of communication with Dedham, and would certainly be monitoring the process, commenting along the way if, when that opportunity avails itself to us.
Could we expect that if that project were at some point to move forward, that a traffic study would take into account impacts on at least like up to the Needham border? Or would we be able to participate in that?
I imagine it would go to the next intersection, which would be Dedham Ave at South, but that's something we could talk with our colleagues in Dedham about, what kind of, what, what their scope for a traffic would, study would be, and if it is something we'd want to comment on. Yeah.
Do you know if the proposal would require Dedham zoning bylaw to change?
My understanding is it would, and right now, the proposal from the developer to the Dedham Planning Board was multiple ideas of a potential project. And so I think it's early on, and they would have to go to Dedham Town Meeting for zoning, and then go back and permit. So it's, it's real, but far out, I guess, is.
So I think neighboring towns are notified, like as a bunders, when there's a zoning, proposed zoning change, so we could provide comments when that happens.
Great point. The next community meeting?
Could I, could I go back? I, I sort of missed that we were at the end of the Pollard discussion when you asked if there were more. I didn't have a question on the last point you made, but I actually want to go back to the prior point and just clarify. Is there a timeline for the seven to one decision? Is that, is there a time when the MSBA is expecting to have that decision made?
Yes, we have, in the work plan between the MSBA and the town, December 15th is our current, is MSBA's expectation of when we're submitting that. And so that's the conversation that we'll have starting tomorrow is, how would we process decision-making between now and December 15th?
So, so they made it clear to us that we, we are to continue with them to study all seven options right now, but that's a track that just runs over the next three months, basically, and then concludes.
Yes, and we have to continue studying all seven, but that doesn't mean that we won't be making choices to narrow along the way. We actually have to be doing both.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And so for Pollard, the next community meeting is September 10th, which is tomorrow, 6:30 at the Pollard and on Zoom for anyone who wants to hear the updates, ask a question. We encourage folks to participate.
I'm just going to ask that, tomorrow, there's a lot going on. There's like a ton of very important meetings that I think a lot of people will be interested in. And while I, I know that scheduling is, is one of the most difficult undertakings we do, I think that to have the public meeting for Pollard, the meeting for Envision at which the new plans are coming out, and then, I don't know, I have a tree meeting, that's probably not as high-profile. But nonetheless, I guess I just, I know that it's very difficult to space these out appropriately, but I think it's hard to have so many competing interests on one night. It really limits the ability of people to participate, even though we provide, you know, recordings and everything, it, it just makes it difficult if people really want to participate in, in those meetings. So I just, I guess any effort that we can make to space them, even though I acknowledge that that's really hard. All right. Okay, super. So we're on to committee reports. So maybe we can just go down the line here. Mary Ann?
So Large House Review met again last night, and the thing to know is that there is a public hearing on the Large House Review work. Their second public hearing is taking place on next Monday, which is September 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in Powers Hall, and by Zoom. And the presentation for that meeting is expected to be posted by the end of this week, so it will be available by Friday, so people can take advantage of that time to review sort of what the committee is looking at, what aspects of houses they are looking at, considering some more regulation of, and be better prepared when they come into the meeting next Monday night. But we hope people will come.
And I would just add that the last meeting of the Large House Committee was actually a report to the planning board, sort of prepping the planning board for kind of what the committee has been doing and what's coming. So if you want a preview, you can take a look at that meeting. Anything else? Nothing else. Josh?
Stormwater has been making a lot of progress on the regulations. We have two more meetings scheduled for next week to finalize those. Then we have a public hearing here on the 24th, where we'll discuss the bylaws again, but also the regulations. Since we already discussed the bylaws, I assume most of the focus will be on the regulations, if that's okay with everyone. That's the plan.
Okay, great. Kathy?
T-CHOC met last night, and it's our quarterly meeting where we get an update on all the projects. And so this was the first time that we heard from Charles River Center, and they had some new drawings, new renderings for us, which looked, improved, you know, they took feedback from various people on that. They have been finalizing their reports, traffic, stormwater, et cetera. They've met with the planning board, design review board, conservation committee, they have submitted an application to the state. It's a long process, but they are, they are making, you know, strides. And so they would, in the winter, put in their paperwork with the hope of getting in the next funding round of the next year. We also heard from Needham Housing Authority, and so they have the two projects. They have Seabeds Way, which is essentially about federal funding and conversion, and then they have Linden Street. And these two are now very, very tied together. And so Seabeds Way has to make itself through the federal process and actually start to break ground to free up these vouchers. It's very complicated, but anyway, to free up something to subsidize the Linden Street. And so the timing of that is going to be tricky because this Linden Street is competing again in the next round of funding with the state. And so the state has basically said, until we see that you have these things freed up, we actually are not interested in funding you. You know, they want to have, they want to have it all together. They want to see that it's all going to work, that all the puzzle pieces come together. So, you know, they're, they're, they're making progress, you know, they continue to do what they need to do. And, you know, they, we were, we were told multiple times, and I want to mention this, that the community support from Needham was really critical, and that the state is noticing that, and, you know, that is in our favor.
Great. Anything else, Kathy?
No.
Okay. Kevin?
Envision Needham Center meets tomorrow. Seal and branding actually met today, and this is, they, there's consensus on a concept for a new seal. We do want to basically trot it out, and so, and what we want to do is give people to show it next to the existing seal with an proposed seal, and get feedback and see what people think. Because we are making sort of a narrative switch in what we're showing in the seal, and we want sort of people to understand what's happening. And then eventually, we will tighten up after that, and, and then get it executed.
Great. Anything else?
Oh, actually, yeah. Went to NEEM overdose awareness vigil, and also India Day this last month. We haven't met since then.
Seems like a long time, yeah. Yeah, the overdose awareness day vigil was quite moving. Yeah, it was a really nice event and, and well done, so. I would also just note that we had an elected women's lunch day, and that was hosted by Mary Ann Cooley, held on the town common, and it was lovely to, to get to socialize with current and former elected and appointed and staff, which was great. Really, really cool to see all the women doing great things. All right. Next, we are looking at the Select Board entering executive session pursuant to exception three, to discuss Springfield Water and Sewer Commission and others versus Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Appeals Court Case Number 2024-P dash P dash 0931, where the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body, and the chair does declare. And also, exception six, to discuss the purchase lease and value of real property, in particular the residential dwelling units located at the Stephen Palmer Building in 83 Pickering Street, Needham, Massachusetts, where the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the body, and this chair does declare. And also, to adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session without returning to open session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, right, roll call. Thank you. Kevin?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Josh?
Yes.
Yes. We are adjourned, or we are leaving. I guess I don't get to pick the gathering. Right, we are leaving.